Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 26th day of February 2024. At this time, I'd like to welcome all of our guests, and I would like to introduce a couple of people that are here tonight. We've got a lot of guests that are on the agenda, but I would like to say that I'm glad to see Mary Ann here, my new executive assistant. She's been hard at work doing great things for the city of Somersville. And so, Mary Ann, good to see you here tonight. The other thing I'd like to point out is you see Annabell sitting back there with Amy. Amy's gonna depart us here in a little bit because she's gonna go home and play mommy for a while. She's gonna have a baby. So Annabell is gonna be the fill-in, and actually, we're fortunate to have Annabell. Annabell is our grant rider, and she's done great things across the entire footprint of the city of Somersville from the standpoint of grants. Annabell, we thank you for all you do. We don't get to see you that often because you're the pencil behind the paper, but Annabell is gonna step up and take Amy's place and do all the minutes for the various city committees, including city council, that Amy does in her absence. So Amy, we'll look forward to seeing you as long as you're here, but we'll be excited for you when you're gone because that means you're home taking care of your baby. So anyway, let's get started with tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held February 12th of 2024.
Move to approve, wait for reading.
Counsel, we have a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to the minutes that were presented in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment?
No, sir.
Nope. Okay. All right. No public comment tonight. We'll move into the next agenda item, which is the Nicholas County Fair update and request. And tonight, we have Leah Burkholder, Anita Groves, and Michelle Underwood speaking on behalf of this update and request. So if y'all would come to the podium. And actually, if you'll make sure that the microphone's on, that would be great. Welcome. The floor is yours.
You got a little red light on?
Tap the switch.
Nope. There's a little switch on.
Yeah. There we are.
Okay. Hi, I'm Leah. This is Anita. We're coming to you for the Nicholas County Fair. We're volunteers, and as you all know, the fair was a huge success last year. Everybody went on and on. What Anita and I need, because we are in charge of the gate admissions, what Anita and I need is help. We need physical body help up there. So we have different people taking care of the gate different nights. And on Friday night, I already had a commitment from the three commissioners of the county that they will help us, and I would like to come and see. Anita and I wanna know if we could count on the council being up there. And then we would have our county and our city up there selling tickets.
And we definitely do need the help. I mean, on Saturday night last year at the fair, you would look out like for a few hours, and people were backed up tonight trying to get in the fair. I mean, we were, and we had very limited. I had my staff at the bank working Saturday, and it was nuts. And so, this is a great opportunity for you guys to say hi to everybody. Show them your smiling faces.
Okay, so are you asking for help on? What day are you asking?
Friday night.
Friday night, okay. Do you know what that date is?
Twenty-sixth, I believe. Four to nine.
Okay, the twenty-sixth.
How do you eliminate? Let's say there's two people at the gate. How do you eliminate the line?
You're just out there working.
Can you make two lines?
Yeah, we're, we've.
Three lines?
There's a line coming in, and we just have people going. We go to them. It works better if we're just going down the line and getting their, giving their tickets and their wristbands, who should give their money, their wristbands, and then they can go on their way. But yeah, I was just, it was, it was a little.
We had like four to five people every night selling tickets. Watching people come down the road, and you walk up to them, and how many you know you got, sell them off his name, and let them go on.
If we had five people, at least we can let them go to the break. Because we didn't really have a lot of those last year. So I know BJ was up there. He was in the dunk tank or, right? Is that right?
Is there any possibility to sell tickets online ahead of time?
Well, yeah, it's probably not gonna work out that way because this be, that would be.
It's expensive.
It's expensive, and we're just, we're trying to keep the prices low. We wanna keep the price at $10 again this year, and Michelle will go into a little bit. But we, we're trying to do everything we can to keep the price down. We're not even doing cards, like debit cards and that type of thing, because there's an expense with that as well. So it worked out okay with this counter last year.
We just could use a little more help.
Sorry?
Thought maybe you all might, four, or five, six of you like to work Friday night with the commissioners, and we have county and city there for the fair. Wear your shirts that says you're a city employee or a councilman or whatever.
And we're not asking for money at this time.
Yeah.
That request comes late.
That's why we're out of this time.
As you know, I did my part.
You worked hard over last year. You did.
I will do it again, so.
I was out of town this last year, but I've been up there prior to that helping.
Well, Jane, I won't think.
So, yeah. Okay, so what you're asking for is you need a head count on council that will come up and volunteer for Friday night, and that's to work the gate.
Right.
Okay.
Next July?
Yes.
Twenty-sixth. And it doesn't, hmm? It doesn't have to be the entire forty-nine. You can break it up into shifts.
Okay.
So that you're not, because it is hot, and it's, it will wear you out.
So what, what is the time?
Maybe two hours, I mean, if you have three.
I mean, when's it start and when's it end?
Four to ten.
Four to ten.
Okay. So counsel, I know this is February, almost March, and the fair is in July. So what I would like you to do is let Mary Ann know for the end of the week if you plan to be there, if all things align, that you can be there. I mean, we're talking, you know, it's hard to make a commitment today that you can definitely say you can be there, but at least if we know we've got the numbers of potential people, that'll help us and we'll let you all know. So there's gonna be another request of them to get to Mary Ann by the end of the week, so we'll also ask them to let her know if they would plan to come on the 26th, four to nine, to help with the fair. And certainly, we appreciate all you all do. There is a lot of buzz about the fair. You've done a lot of fantastic work, and of course, that's what this community's all about, and people come together and they care, and obviously, you all do. Can't thank you enough for what you've done. Michelle, are you gonna give us an update? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Mary Ann will let you know. Who do you want, who do you want her to let know?
Let Anita.
Let Anita? Okay, Mary Ann, if you'll let Anita know by Friday, we'll just give you a little number on how many plans to come if things align right now. Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
The president of the Nicholas County Fair Board.
Yes, it's been about a year, almost. Last April, we had a meeting. I was in that meeting by phone, and was asked if I would be interested in taking on the Nicholas County Fair. As most of you know, I work at the Nicholas County Health Department as a nurse. Was in that mess of a pandemic that we had. I've never run a fair. I was a little nervous. At the first meeting, I called a bunch of friends, and it was a phone to friend, and said, and I thought, how did I end up at the front of this room? What I can say about the fair and the volunteers has been nothing but amazing. I'm proud to be the Nicholas County Fair president, and the fair has become my baby. And you can ask one of your city councilmen how very dedicated I am to this fair.
Are you talking about your dad? Full disclosure. Why don't you say, "Ask the mayor"?
Ask the mayor. Ask the mayor how dedicated he is. He walks back.
Michelle, you, listen, we don't have to ask your dad. We know how hard you and your board work.
And so, we're going to do even better this year. Our fair is July 24th through the 27th. There's some good things coming. We will have the same amusement company, except he's bringing fourteen different rides. We're working very hard to keep it at $10 for our community so our kids can get in. But the big thing that I think the fair has done, we're not just coming in asking for money from everybody. We have been doing our own fundraisers, including bingo. We did a gun raffle with some lessons learned with that. We will be drawing on March 9th for that raffle. And ended up, so if you bought tickets for me early, you got an extra ticket for each ticket you bought. It just went better at two for ten. So we made a little bit from that. We made close to $7,500 off our bingos.
Wow.
And we have one more to do, which will be more tonight. So we don't think it's because of the economy to keep asking, asking, asking. We need to be working on our own, and that's what we're doing. This year, we are going to start what's called the Nicholas County Fair Lifetime Achievement Award. There's many people in this county, you know, the fair is 99 years old. Well, actually, it's older, but it was canceled for two years, once during World War II, and the other time was this infamous 2020 COVID season. Next year is our eyes on, it's 100 years, and we will be asking for everybody's help because we want it to be a celebration statewide, not just countywide. We've brought people from both sides of the county in, so we feel that richwood's side is also being involved. We've got some of the on-the-board members. They're participating, helping us fundraise, donating money. So this is not just Somersville. This is the entire county, and we're very proud of that. We'll have our art show, quilt show. Remembering the barn, it used to be full of products, and we're bringing that back. We have the Department of Agriculture, and they'll be working with us, and we'll have the 4-H, what's that? Auction for the 4-H kids, which last year, those kids raised $18,000. And it went back to the kids. It didn't go to us. It didn't go, those kids that had a cow or sheep to go, whatever. I've learned a lot. It went back to them so they could purchase another animal to raise, and then I didn't stick around for the auction because I couldn't watch the kids. On the four days, Wednesday will be Children's Night. We'll have the pageant, and then we'll have something. We're gonna have a different type of activity for them, not so much music. There's a couple cute dog shows and stuff that I've looked into. On Thursday night, we, the community has asked for a gospel night, and we will keep that. We'll have a local, a couple local performers. And the churches, last year, were the ones that supported that. They normally don't ask, but our pastor, they're getting better, and they're moving up in Nashville, so we're gonna have to help them out. On Friday night, we're gonna have a hip-hop thing up.
Now, what's it called?
Avalon. Avalon, which is.
Oldies.
Oldies. So everybody's been asking for that. And then on Saturday is our big day. From one to ten, we'll have an antique tractor show. We're gonna have a horse show. I have a couple ideas that the fair board knows that it's gonna bring back the old county fair, and that's what we want. We want, you know, we had a cherry pot eating contest. Cherry pot wasn't really the best choice that the president made. Should've probably been that one. The dunking booth was a huge success. BJ helped us out. We had a mechanical bull. So financially, we brought money in, we took, we spent money out, but we're not a nonprofit, so that's what, we're not here to make money. We're to give it back. So I'm pretty excited. We are in full fair mode. That's why we're going to re-veen our bingos in the fall. It's been a huge hit with our committee, or with our community all over the county. It's a lot of fun if you've never went, and we have great concessions as well. I feel positive that you'll be pleased with the fair that we will bring this year, and open to any questions that you may have.
You said you had one more bingo. When is that, and where is the bingo location?
It's on March 9th, and it's at the dining hall at the park. It's this county.
Sixteenth.
No, it actually opens at 5:00, 5:00 P.M. And we're usually done about 7:00, 7:30. We had some prize winners come out of there. We've had 50/50s. It's been a fun time. I think everybody, it's, it's work. It's hard work.
Good.
But our volunteers, Lindsay is a volunteer. Annabell is our volunteer secretary, so she look around the room. Mr. Underwood has volunteered. BJ, so we'd like to see all of you. There's been other youths that have helped in different ways, and we appreciate everything that every person in this community has done.
Okay. You mentioned earlier that you were doing this for the youth. What, what does it cause, what does it cost the youth to attend?
Last year, we were able to let 500 people in free.
No, no, I mean, how many would you expect to attend? Youth?
Youth? Um, I don't.
Fifteen hundred?
Oh, no. Because we almost had 8,000 people last year, so I.
And that would be how much per ticket?
$10.
Okay.
Seniors, 65 and older, were allowed in at $8, and we're hoping to keep it at that same rate. When I went to Fairs and Festivals convention, what I did learn is most fairs have had to, because of inflation, has had to increase it to $15. We don't wanna do that.
And how have you, how have you funded letting the amount of youth in that you let in for free?
From grants. The Leprechaun Foundation gave us a $5,000 grant last year, and that was used solely for the admission price.
Did the community foundation give you anything?
Last year, yes. Yes, they did, last year.
So there's. Was there money for that purpose too, or? Seems like one year that we approved money for.
I think.
For entry.
Entertainment.
Oh, and last year was entertainment?
Entertainment. I think prior to our.
The year before it was.
I think it was for.
Entry. Okay, yeah.
And once you pay the $10, that's all you pay to get.
You don't have to pay for the rides?
So there's possibly we could have a local fundraiser to raise money for youth.
Absolutely.
That's what they're doing with their.
We're trying our very best, because this is, this is, you know, yeah.
That's really good. You pay $10, you get all the rides?
You get all the rides.
Holy smokes.
There is absolutely no other, I mean, your food or.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the mechanical bull was a big hit. You paid $5 to ride a mechanical bull, and it was great to watch. And we made, that was.
I challenge all my councils, right?
I mean, I think you might pull out.
A mechanical bull. No, we challenge the county commission.
There's your. There's your next fundraiser. I take up the money for that.
And the dunk tank raised money as well. Aaron Evans was on there, and that gentleman, I don't know how he survived because he didn't get a breath of it. They were, but, you know, we don't want you to think we're just at the, I'm telling you why I'm here. You know, I have my daughters longer in Nicholas County. I don't have grandchildren here, but I do work with those that are less advantaged. They don't have parents that can bring them to the beach or take them to Disney World. So here in Nicholas County, we have to offer them the same thing that other kids should be able to do. You know, when I was a kid, Wayne Aker was president, and what did you live for? Going to the fair every week, every day. And you, and we do take safety very serious. All our members are trained, fortunately, in NARCAN administration. We went through, I don't know, nobody likes to talk about it, but in case of an active shooter or any type, we can lock that park down, and we had to. And what I did learn at Fairs and Festivals, that everybody's sort of looking at that. We, I got to host at Fairs and Festivals on how to revitalize your event. So that was a big proud moment for the Nicholas County Fair to get back in good graces with the Fairs and Festivals.
Awesome. Good. Any other questions, counsel?
Nope.
Hey, thank you all.
We'll take checks or cash.
Or volunteers.
Or volunteers.
Remember, volunteer requests was before the money.
They vote.
Yeah, yeah, vote. There you go.
Thank you, dear.
Hey, thank you all. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So counsel, if you would please let Mary Ann know by Friday if you could at least plan or plan to help with that volunteer project of the Nicholas County Fair for the 2024 season. Next item on the agenda, glad to have Chambers tonight, the executive director of the chamber, Lindsay Skidmore, to give us a Chamber of Commerce update. Welcome, Lindsay.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce. I brought with me a brief video that we put together with the help of SC TV that I'd like to share with you. Welcome to the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce, where we strive to be your trusted resource to promote, educate, and serve our businesses and community. Where we advocate for businesses and bring awareness to our nonprofits. Collaborate with local media to keep you informed.
Where we host events to unite our businesses and community.
Where we collaborate on member-hosted events.
Where we contribute to our remarkable community traditions.
Where we focus on community growth and economic development.
Where we are committed to the education of our businesses and community.
Where we seek our opportunities to boost business development.
Where we recognize the importance of networking.
Where we brainstorm innovative ways to boost the local economy.
The Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce.
Where we are committed to being a champion for your business and a partner to our community.
The Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce is run by a dedicated board of 15 volunteers representing businesses and organizations all across our county. Through the dedication, through their dedication, the chamber has placed an emphasis on promotion, marketing, and education of our local businesses. The benefits from our organization continue to increase each year, and as they say, the proof is in the pudding. We have more than doubled our chamber membership in the last two years, growing from a mere 70 members in 2021 to over 160 members to date. In 2023, we focused on increasing the chamber's community presence by taking part in or hosting one of 15 events throughout the year. You may have seen our volunteers passing out ice cream at Music of the Pavilion, hosting free carnival games at the Nicholas County Fair, and the Capitol Christmas Tree event, hiding potatoes at the Potato Festival's annual spot hunt and sack rates, or passing out Halloween candy to eager trick-or-treaters. Our chamber-hosted events are continuing to gain attendance each year. 2023 was the second year for our back-to-school batch, a time when we connect members with the families of school-aged children and help them usher in the school year with the passing out of school supplies, books, games, prizes, crafts, and much more. Another second-year event was our kickoff to the annual potato festival, The Taste of Nicholas County, a chance for the community to join us for great local music and to sample some of the most delicious cuisine from our food service members as they competed for awards such as Best Potato Ditch, Best Potato Dessert, and the most coveted award, Fan Favorite. Pink Weekend's third year was the biggest yet. This is an event we host the week before Black Friday, where we encourage the local community to kick off their holiday, holiday shopping season right here in our local area. We pass out maps of participating businesses and give out some really great prizes to those who shop local. This year, we had over 30 participating businesses, many of which have contacted me to inform me that they have hit their biggest sales all year during that week. And my phone is already ringing with members making sure that we are planning Pink Weekend 2024. If you attended any New Life Christian Academy, Somersville Middle School, or Nicholas County High School home sporting events, you've seen the crowd go wild as cheerleaders toss shirts to the most enthusiastic members. This year, our education committee had a lot of fun encouraging local students to be creative and help us develop and design the graphics for the t-shirts being tossed at those games. All of the submissions were fantastic, and our team had a hard time choosing just one. So we ended up picking two designs, and we were able to toss out about 400 shirts throughout the sports season. It was such a hit that we just opened up the contest again this year for next year's sporting season. Our education team was also busy hosting many educational and networking opportunities for our members, such as the Lunch and Learn Series, Meet the Candidate Night, Somersville Behind the Scenes, and our newest addition, Chamber Brews and News. Whilst our member care committee was organizing ribbon cutting, ribbon cuttings, the Spotlight of the Month promotion, and managing social media marketing, we were honored to present almost a dozen awards, Grammy-style, to deserving members of our annual awards banquet. And all year long, our newest committee, the Winter Classic Committee, was heading up our biggest undertaking yet. We don't care to take one of these, as I was passing by. The Winter Classic started out as an idea for a small, one-day tournament to raise funds for the chamber while promoting our member businesses and organizations to the event attendees. The response to the idea was so great that it quickly grew into a five-day, five-day-long basketball tournament held at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. We hosted over 55 teams from all over the state. As the tournament grew, we quickly realized the potential for the economic impact on our community. We encouraged member businesses to take part in advertising, hosting halftime shows, passing out coupons, and more. Just this morning, I actually had a business manager tell me that his one-day sales increased during the event over 40%, and that's compared to last year's sales. Our local hotels recorded teams booking multiple rooms. For instance, a small school in Peyton City, West Virginia booked 18 rooms just for their boys' team. That doesn't include their girls' team, fans, parents, and that. A large school from Northeastern West Virginia, Spring Mills, they brought both their boys' and girls' teams to the area, and they decided to stay two extra days so that they can actually enjoy the amenities of Somersville and the surrounding area. Many of them had never been to this area before, and like I told the Spring Mills coach, once you come to Somersville one time, you'll wanna come back. We decided to partner with WDU and conduct an economic impact study to see if the tournament had as great an impact as we had anticipated. This study, as you'll see, when you look at the numbers, it only encompasses the money brought into our town from outside of the county. It does not take into account the money spent hosting the tournament or any funds that were circulated throughout our community during the event. If you have any questions about that, we'd happy to answer those questions, but I'll give you a minute there to look at those numbers. He did say that those are very conservative numbers. He didn't wanna inflate any numbers, and like I said, it's all what was brought into the
Who were your major sponsors for your t-shirt giveaway?
For the t-shirt toss? We had, I think we had 12 sponsors. I wish I could name them all.
It doesn't matter. I just wanna make sure that you're getting out there and getting as, as many of those sponsors as you can.
Absolutely.
Now, because there's, I'm sure there are people here that would be more than willing to contribute to that.
Yeah.
Not that they care to have their name on there, but just to support the activity.
Yes, and if you've been, it's a lot of fun. The kids have a lot of fun. It's actually really. It's actually really great for the businesses. Not only do they get their name on the T-shirt, we actually provide a banner to the stadium as well as both the gyms with all of the logos, and then we announce all of the sponsors at halftime as well.
So this says it was done by John Chambers. Is he out of the same department as Deskins, Dr. Deskins? Do you know him?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. By John Deskins, PhD, director, yeah, 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 he is.
Yeah, so Jason was our contact for this. He actually headed up getting this done, but he worked directly with WDU, and they were really great. We put out a survey, and that's how we got these numbers. At the event, we gave away a prize. Whoever would do the survey was entered to win the prize. We actually got back, I think, 186 responses to the survey, so pretty good numbers, so it helped with the accuracy of the impact study. So what does 2024 look like for the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce? As you see in your tentative Chamber schedule, our year is already jam-packed with exciting events. We will be kicking off our quarterly meeting of the members next month with Chamber Brews and News hosted by the Brownstone Room in Mount Eba. Each quarter, we will have a new host, a new venue, and a new opportunity to mingle with many of our great member business owners and leaders. In April, we will be at Old May for the first of two Meet the Candidate Nights this year. We will once again be partnering with SCTV to broadcast this event live, so viewers who are unable to attend in person may still submit their questions to candidates. We will be back at the golf course in May, ready to drive and put our way through a successful fundraising event. Summer and fall will once again bring the Chamber into the community as we partner with local organizations in various community events. We have started contacting many new partners to bring on board for our Back to School Batch this year. Our hope is to make it even bigger and better by adding various medical and dental opportunities for children, as well as the chance to meet and greet with local law, fire, and emergency services. We have decided to combine our member showcase with The Taste of Nicholas to allow non-food service members the opportunity to set up at the taste and self-promote their business and organization to the community. Event attendees will still enjoy the sounds of local entertainment and the aroma of delicious food, but they will also get a glimpse into additional various businesses expo-style. Our annual awards banquet is quickly becoming one of the member favorite events, so this year we are planning to continue to lay out the red carpet and allow our members to vote for their selections for awards such as Business of the Year, Member Hosted Event of the Year, and more. As I said before, many members are knocking on my door excited for Pink Weekend, so we expect business participation will continue to grow. This year with that event, we plan to focus on marketing the event to our local area, but we also want to focus heavily on marketing it to surrounding areas. We actually had several people that came into the area for that event this year, so we want to really focus on the marketing. As we wrap up 2024, our members will once again be ready for an update, not only from the Chamber, but the CDB, Mayor, and County Commission. We are currently penciled in on the first Tuesday in December at Veterans Memorial Park Dining Hall. Plans for the 2024 Winter Classic started the day after 2023 Winter Classic ended. This year, we will be back at the arena December 26th through the 30th with a break on Sunday the 29th. The schedule is quickly filling up. We actually have 39 teams already registered. Last year, we had 56 total, so we're over halfway to being full. We look forward to our economic impact numbers continuing to grow each year. 2023 was a year focused on community engagement, outreach, and member promotion through events. While we are always looking to improve our events, in 2024, our team has decided to focus directly on its members. We want to dedicate our time to making sure that we are meeting the needs of our businesses and organizations. We want to take a look into bringing our webpage, digital campaigns, and social media marketing up to speed. We want to promote our member directory in our local community and to the tourists passing through. And we want to recognize the accomplishments of our new members while celebrating the achievements of those who have been with us for years, because after all, our Chamber is here for our members because of our members.
Good report.
Thank you.
Guests have any questions? I'm trying to speed it up.
Yeah, no. So, yeah. So, Council, do you have any questions?
I'm just blown away. I'm very, just so pleased about the direction of our Chamber and the advancements that they've made just in the last couple of years. Lindsay, your work is exceptional, and I did attend the Winter Classic and heard nothing but popular things, and I believe that this impact study may be falling a little bit short.
I think it is.
In knowing what other businesses have told me, and I know directly what our business that I work for, we had a huge increase during that time. So I just want to say thank you to you, I thank you to your board, I'm just super impressed with the direction that y'all are moving in. I'm looking forward to next year.
I highly recommend if you are here during that week in between Christmas and New Year's to attend the event, there was some great basketball that was played during that week. We had some great games, we had some teams from out of the area that normally we wouldn't see that have traditionally good programs. We're here, and it was great to watch, and we had great crowds. A lot of local businesses gave to, just to have stuff, giveaways, prizes and so forth that we handed out. Anita was here earlier, United Bank gave us some stuff. We had a lot of folks that really chipped in, and we had a lot of volunteers. Thanks to all those volunteers that helped make that such a good event, and we need you next year, too.
We actually had so many volunteers, and they kept coming back every day. You know, the volunteers we would schedule on day one would come back on day two. In addition to our day-two volunteers, we had to actually start sending people home, because everyone just wanted to come back, because it was such an exciting environment.
Yeah.
You did a great job.
Yeah, so I echo everything that you all have said. I think that tournament was definitely a grand slam. Got the opportunity to pass through and help out a little bit, and it was remarkable. I mean, smiles, and really working the signing table one time, people weren't even signed in, they were saying, "How do we sign up for next year?" Because of just the way they were treated, all the gift bags you gave them, the hospitality room, you know, y'all hit a grand slam. I mean, and not only, you know, is that good to bring people to Somersville, but it's also good to give our youth the opportunity to come and play basketball in a tournament like that on their own turf here at home. Just remarkable. The other thing I want to highlight, too, is, you know, I go down memory lane, being where I've been for a long time. There was a time where our Chamber was going to be distinct. As a matter of fact, I pulled some real strings and said, "We can't let this happen." And I said, "We just can't be without a Chamber because of the value I know a Chamber will bring to a community." And the Chamber, you, Lindsay, the Executive Director, and your Board of Directors do a spectacular job on making sure that you're there for the purpose you should be, and that's business, the economy, and then, you know, in the collaborations and partnerships you do with everybody, it's a win-win-win. And so please take back to your board, I know BJ Smith and Stevie LaRose here are both on your board, but it's about all of you collectively in the work you do, because that's something else that I think breeds your success, is when you show up at a Chamber event, you don't see one or two people carrying the weight, you see them all. You see them all, just like at that tournament. You didn't see a handful of Chamber Board members working, you saw them all, and that's why you've got good success, you've got great leadership. So, Lindsay, thanks for all you do, and again, you regularly are checking in, and, you know, anytime we've got something going on with the city, you're right there, and we appreciate that.
I gotta say this.
Gotta say it, Stevie said it. Last word, Ste.
I'll say the last one.
Okay.
Lindsay and Ashley and Ashley Wall and Elizabeth Thayer, you three were there the entire time, every single day.
Sun up to sundown.
Yeah, those three folks did a fantastic job.
Kudos to you all, and they were exhausted.
I didn't miss anybody, did I? You three were exhausted.
Jason was there watching.
And Jason, Jason was rocking me. He did a sick, but he put his sound system up because he wanted it to be loud. He did, they, those four folks did a fantastic job.
And again, you know, we can overemphasize the basketball tournament, because it was great and awesome, but I gotta say, everything you guys have put your hands on of late, including The Taste of Nicholas County, that's basically now the kickoff of the Potato Festival. It's all great. Y'all doing an excellent job. Keep up the good work. We appreciate you. Thanks, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Recorder's Report.
No report to see.
No report. Okay, I'm glad you saved me some extra time. No, just real quick, Council, the first thing I want to highlight is, I'm going to come to the next meeting and ask for a request for an additional $15,000 for our festival, the Potato Festival, and just economically for entertainment and the things that we continue to do to make our festival a well-attended and, you know, a highlight of the history of this county being the Potato Festival. Next meeting, I just wanted to let you know, I wanted to give you a heads up, there will be a budget request of an additional $15,000 for this year's Potato Festival.
How much?
$15,000.
Thank you.
Yeah. I also want to talk about West Virginia Living Best of the Mountain Lakes Region 2023 Awards. They're actually coming to the Somersville Arena and Conference Center to give out those awards for the 2023 year. I'm really proud to say that we had some winners and a lot of what I call honorable mention, either first runner-up or second runner-up. I will tell you that the best town in the Mountain Lake region, the city of Somersville, will receive the award that evening. The best campground in the Mountain Lakes region is Somersville Lake Retreat and Lighthouse, and these are all, these are all the winners of these categories, and then I'm going to mention some that were either first runner-up or second runner-up. The community champion, basically somebody that promotes your community and does an excellent job, we're proud that our CDB Executive Director, Tracy McCoy, won that award. So those were all the winners, and then other mention that will be, that will receive their awards that evening as well. The best bakery in the Mountain Lakes region was Almost Heaven Pepperoni Rolls here in Nicholas County. Best recreation venue, this one kind of surprises me a little bit, Somersville Lake State Park. Somersville Lake State Park. So anyway, of course, we're proud it's Somersville Lake, it's here in Somersville, so they won the recreation venue. Place to shop, and these are all, these weren't first place, these were either first or second runner-up. Place to shop, Tenille's Boutique and, what is it, Boutique and?
Formal.
Formals, that's it, I couldn't read my writing. Formal, Boutique and Formal, very proud of them. Watering Hole Maloney's, so several first and second runner-up as well as several winners. But all of these communities will be here on March 12th at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, 5:30 to 7:30 for a reception and the actual presentation of awards. So very proud of what this area has to offer, and certainly proud that we collectively, and I'm talking citizens, employees, leadership, we collectively are and should be honored that we're the best town in the Mountain Lakes region. Council, a couple of other things I want to let you know so you're aware of it. We'll soon be going to bid, in March, we'll be going to bid our CD, our Rainy Day Fund. We have $1,120,796.69 that will be, the actual CD expires on May 2nd and matures, so in March or April, we'll go ahead and put that out to bid, probably April, so that we can get banks to commit on interest. We're right now receiving 3.75. We'll be putting that back into some form of a CD, we'll go to bid. So if you see an RFP for the Rainy Day Fund, that's why, we'll get, we'll put it out to bid for the local banks. Also, Council, at the next meeting, I'm going to send you out some literature and advance, but there's a couple of things that I want to review on the city employee benefit side of things. Oh, yeah, let me tell you, y'all got an invitation to the Best of the Mountain Lakes, I almost forgot. This is an RSVP thing, they want to make sure they know who's coming. So if you would please, you got a flyer on it tonight with the information, and then on the back of it is Mary Ann's business card, just in case you don't know how to get a hold of Mary Ann. Please contact Mary Ann by Friday and let her know if you plan to attend, and she'll RSVP for you. So two things, if you're going to work the fair and attend this, please let Mary Ann know, and she'll do the RSVP. Did I do that? Is there anything else with that, Mary Ann?
No. They also can bring a guest if they would like.
Yeah, you can also bring a guest. Council, something else that I'm going to go ahead and send out to you out of the Employee Guidelines, Employee Manual of the city of Somersville, there's two things that I would like to visit. One is, I want to, I want to visit, actually, I want to change, I'm going to bring before you a proposal to update the vacation. An employee here that works from zero to two years only gets four hours a month vacation. I want to increase that. I want to increase that to six hours, and then two to five is six hours, I'm going to look at tweaking the rest, maybe climb the ladder a little bit better than what we are now. And I'll tell you what we as a city are running up against with private sector, and again, I struggle all the time with utilities. Today, in examining some of the private sector jobs that are out there and the compensation people are working, for example, I got the pay of somebody that works in the bakery or Walmart, I got the pay of somebody that works at Sheetz, and what, you know, sadly I have to report is, is as we try to stay competitive in the job market, and we used to always be able to sell our benefits, our benefits, our benefits, and we do have good benefits, but as this economy has changed and the labor force and the compensation for that labor force has changed, I got to tell you, you know, we're not in the position that we used to be. And so, you know, we've got people doing intensive, what I call labor jobs, that are making less than what some of these other people are being compensated. So not only do we have to look at tweaking that, and the real issue we run up against is meeting our debt covenants on the utilities, and we're a city, and we just always can't compensate the way we need to. I've also even kind of put the city employees on notice that we might not do the one-time pay adjustment, because what I would like to do is give a bigger percentage in compensation this year. I don't know that we'll do that, but I'm looking at that, and this is budgeting cycle. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, all day, from the morning till early afternoon, every half hour, every department head comes in for their annual budget meeting, getting it all prepared for you all. Remember that budget meeting, or finance meeting for the city of Somersville for you all is Monday, March 4th at 6:00 PM. Anyway, what I'm going to bring before you is a potential change in the guidelines of the Employee Manual for Vacation and increasing on the lower end. And then the other thing that I want you all to take a look at is the definition of relative in our Employee Guidelines manual. We have some things in our guidelines that are not in the state ethics and/or state statute. We've got some additional language in there. So I want you all to review it as I have, and we need to make a decision, do we want ours to be tougher than the State Ethics Commission and State Statute? It's been in there. We've got some verbiage in our relative language definition, and what we're talking about is nepotism. We've got some language in ours that is not, you know, that doesn't appear in other places that one would look on these issues, the Ethics Commission and State Statute. So I'm going to ask you to look at that and then potentially bring a change where we remove some of that.
When will that be provided?
What's that?
When will that be provided?
I'll get it sent out to you all tomorrow, I'll get it emailed out to you. So you'll get two, you'll get two pieces tomorrow, the lead benefits, and then the City Employee Guideline, and then what I'm specifically looking at is definition of relative. In ours, just to tell you, we got aunt, uncle, cousin, step relatives, though that is not in the state statute and/or the West Virginia ethics. When you file an ethics complaint, if it's nepotism- When you file an ethics complaint, if it's nepotism, that verbiage is not, verbiage that's in either one of theirs. So anyway, we just want to look at it and maybe update ours. So those two things will be coming. We'll get them sent out to you tomorrow, emailed, give you plenty of time to review them before we have them for discussion at the next meeting.
Just make sure you define nepotism.
Okay.
In it as well.
We'll sure do that. Okay. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to let you know, Counsel, is I'm currently working to reignite our relationship with our bond attorney, which is John Stump. As we went into the Home Row Program and earmarked monies in that program for the build-out of our recreational park, those are the funds that we've identified that will help us borrow money to get the recreational park underway, so I'm going to go ahead and start that process. As a matter of fact, I've already met with a couple of banks to talk about interest and the actual issues of bonds, but what we have to do is, is that is a formal bid process. We just can't select the bank, we have to put it out for bid. So if you see anything on that, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to reach out to our bond attorney that we have a relationship with and get all the proper protocol of what we need to do, and then, of course, bring before you and your authorization to go ahead and start that process to put out an RFP for bonds. Counsel, I also want you to know that the next Army Corps of Engineers study update is March eleventh at three PM, and I will take that down here, so anybody that wants to join that update on March eleventh, you're welcome to do so. Let's see. That concludes the Mayor's Report. Unless anybody has any questions.
Three PM, is that right?
Yeah, March eleventh at three PM, and if you'll just come to City Hall, we'll take the call right in here. I believe the actual study team, that you all got the opportunity to meet those that you could make the meeting, they have now gone back and reunited with the DC, Ms. Calissimo that's working out of the DC office. So now they've had a meeting, we're going to have a meeting with them, and then actually, next month's meeting, the Undersecretary of the Army staff will actually set in on that meeting, because the study is actually getting to draft form. One thing real positive, as you all well know, we shipped out just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars for that study, and in a real positive way, it looks like they're going to definitely come in under budget, so we'll be seeing some return funds for that study. Any questions? Okay, Counsel comments? Okay, Chief, you got anything? Any other things?
Not a thing.
Well, I announced special guests, somehow I missed you, so.
I was wondering.
Okay, if, Counsel, if you don't have any comments, Wayne, have we got anything going on at Brown Oaks or anything we need to let people know?
I don't know if you're aware. CJ. Build them on that.
CJ, thanks.
She's.
He's running in case I put him at the podium.
She is running. She is coming home tomorrow.
Okay.
And so we had to cancel any group we want to have then.
Good deal.
So we have to juggle some things around.
Outstanding. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a first. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Question so carries. Thanks, Counsel.